I'd like to welcome everyone here to the special town meeting. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Which is where is the flag? Over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know that most of you here have already done the quorum test, but we're going to officially do it now. Quorum is 83. Right now, we're up to 91, which is nice, because then at least four or five of you can leave, and we're still all set. I'm also required to tell you that the fire exits are on both sides of the hallway here and in the rear outside where you came in. If less than 10 of you have to leave the meeting early, please drop your electronic voting devices, but I would prefer that you don't. Hopefully, this will be a short enough meeting that nobody has to. Anybody not see their name on their quorum? Give you a minute or two. For the record, I have checked the warrant and the constable's return of service, and this has been duly served in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And it looks like we have 93 people here, so we officially have a quorum. So why don't we just get underway? Article one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Paul Cohen, Town Manager. And thank you for taking time to come out this evening for a special town meeting. As the moderator announced at the conclusion of the spring annual town meeting, we had to meet this evening primarily for the South Row Elementary School roof project. That is an elementary school roof project that is going to be funded by over half of the costs by the Massachusetts School Building Authority under the Accelerated Repair Program. And basically, the state had not given its approval, nor did we have final cost estimates at the time of the spring annual town meeting almost two months ago. So again, thank you for coming out this evening. As I said, we'll be as efficient as possible. It's pretty straightforward. And without any further ado, I'm going to turn the podium over to our Public Works Director, Christine Clancy, who'll be presenting on this article.
So the town annually assesses the missable in school roofs, and we plan for necessary repairs or replacement. And so this roof replacement project is funded through the Massachusetts Accelerated Repair Program. And through this program, we're able to receive reimbursement through the program, which is great. And I'll get into that in tonight's presentation. We -- the reason why we're here tonight is because we want to have construction begin next summer, and with that, we have to do bidding this fall. So we want to have the request tonight as opposed to fall town meeting. So this project includes -- in the annual assessments we do, we have annually all of our roofs evaluated, and so it is broken up into various roof sections. Roof section one that you see in the white here, that was replaced in 2020 with white PVC membrane. And then this project here that we're presenting for tonight and for the funding request is all these hatched sections that you see, the red, the blue, and the green sections. It's about 39,000 square feet. The main roof here that you see is about 26 years of -- in age, so it's really past its useful life. We have had reports of leaks. And then we have this modular roof over on the side also that's 33 years old and also have experienced leaks. So this is all proposed as part of this project. There is a roof section up top here that is not included, roof section number five, that is a modular building as well for classrooms, that has about 10 to 11 years left of useful So as far as the scope of work and just to kind of explain why we're asking for this amount of about $4.5 million, so it removes removal -- includes removal of two existing roof systems. And I wanted to -- I thought it was important to show a cross-section here of the roof sections. We have -- so with the MSBA program, we've hired SOCA Tech and also OPM Consultant. And with this, they've done 11 test cuts along the roof to really analyze the existing roof section. The roof section is actually two roof sections that have to be removed down to the existing deck. So just to explain that a little bit is, so it's a steel deck on the bottom with a two-and-a-half-inch-thick inch perlite concrete decking. Above that is the original roof comprised of coal tar pitch and built-up roof system. And then the second roof system above that is mechanically fastened systemed to the existing roof system. So both of those -- all those layers have to be removed in order to install this new roofing system. As far as the square footage, it's about 39 -- it says 30, it says over actually 39,000 square feet. And also the solar panels, there -- so the existing roof has 800 solar panels. These solar panels were installed 10 years ago, and there's about 10 years of remaining life on -- for these solar panels. The MSBA does reimburse for removal and resetting of solar panels. It being a new roof, we really desire to have new panels put on the roof so that we're not putting back old panels and having to come back in 10 years to replace the panels. So we are recommending in this cost estimate to purchase solar panels. That is ineligible an expense for that. So we're proposing to put 500 solar panels back on the roof, and that is because of increased efficiency of the system. So we're putting back 500 panels, but really equating to the same solar load that we'd be receiving. Also, in this project, some other highlights is AD upgrades to be in compliance with 521 CMR. There's some entryway upgrades. Also, there's a staff restroom inside the first floor or inside the building that needs to be upgraded. And then also on the side of the building, some minor upgrades. So this is all included in the scope of the project. As far as the existing HVAC and the electrical drainage that's really proposed to be removed and reset, as far as drainage, it would be reset, the first five feet of drainage replacement would be included in this project's scope. So all that adds up to just in the amount of $4.5 -- $4.5 to $7 million. That also includes -- so the MSBA requires a detailed special cost estimate, and they have a certain fee structure that we have to put together. And this is the request that we had to submit in asking for funding tonight. We cannot go -- if this -- the construction cost comes in higher, that is a cost that the town would have to incur. So we wanted to make sure that we were conservative as possible. That includes the design costs, the owner's project management costs. It includes the ineligible expenses of the solar panels, the actual purchase of the solar panels, and also includes a 5% owner's contingency. With that, so of the $4.5 million, as far as the estimated eligibility or MSBA eligibility reimbursement, it's 52.26% reimbursement estimated. Taking out the ineligible items, that's about $2.1 million that we would be receiving back as part of this project. As far as timeline, like I said, we're hopeful to, with tonight's approval, have the project go out to bid this fall and then start construction this summer. Couple other items to note, the proposed membrane is -- we propose roofing material is PVC membrane matching the white membrane you see here. That will -- we're recommending, or the report recommends, a 30-year roof warranty. And also, I've been asked about the solar panels that are there. So we still have 10 years left on the solar panels, so the thought is that we could potentially salvage them and resell them. We don't have a purpose for them to put back on this roof or another roof in town, but there potentially would be resale value in that roofing infrastructure or the solar panels. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article One.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article One.
School Committee have a recommendation?
Sorry about that. When the School Committee convened, they unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you. Now's the time for questions and debate.
Chris Bowman, Precinct 10. I have one question, because my other questions are already answered. I was wondering, did the solar -- did any of the solar panels contribute to the disrepair of the South Row roof?
No, the roof is really the age. So this roof was warranted probably for 20 years, so it's really the age of the roof that needs to be replaced, separate from the age of the solar panels.
Thank you. Yep. And I have some comments. These are actually go-to-warrant articles, one and two, because they involve school infrastructure. So instead of getting up twice, I'll just say it once. Okay. All right. Articles, again, one and two, deal with the school infrastructure, which is essential to properly address and maintain for safety and to protect the already high investment in the school structure. But in reading these warrants, they appear to be reactionary rather than anticipatory. And since the infrastructure costs are very expensive, they should be more anticipated and appropriately planned out so as not to overburn the taxpayers financially. Also, these two warrant articles should have been presented at the spring town meeting. The capital project budget needed to be modified with these two infrastructure projects and defer some of the other projects to the following year by prioritizing necessity rather than tacking on additional projects after the fact. And of course, something is going to have to give. Or use the general fund for the lesser necessity projects or forego them altogether. Thank you very much.
Hi, Doreen Deschle, Precinct 9. I just have two questions. One of them is, did you look at any other solar -- any other roofing such as Tesla? You know, they have like a, I don't know if it's called solar, but they have a roofing thing that helps with vinegar as well, other than the solar panels? Did you look at any other type?
So as far as the schematic design report, it did look at a few different various roof types, EPDM and PVC, I guess all a membrane roofing, but nothing that had solar panels built into the roofing system? That wouldn't be MSBA eligible if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I was asking.
Yeah, so the solar panels would be a separate from the membrane. That's been standard through the MSBA projects and I guess in terms of what material we have placed on, replaced in the past few years.
Okay, so you didn't check anything else? You didn't check out Tesla?
We did not check out Tesla.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is the $2.1 million, is that a definite or is that a we might get?
So that is a definite, and I guess if not to exceed, so I guess if costs came in lower potentially, but that is a definite.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bruce Rosen, Precinct 5.
Can you speak up a little, please?
Bruce Rosen, Precinct 5.
Thank you.
I'm not that familiar with solar panels, but I was kind of curious, what's the return on investment? When do we break even? Thank you. When do we break even having to buy new panels after we've taken down the old ones?
Sure. So as part of this schematic design, this was looked into to actually remove and reset them, there's -- sorry, I need some feedback. There's some -- the ballasts are deteriorated, so there'd be some replating repairs needed. And the cost of those repairs would probably be very similar to the cost of replacement. And also just the value of putting new panels on a new roof so we don't have to come back in 10 years. You know, you potentially have, you could impact the roof material in 10 years. So really, it was more minimal. I mean, we're carrying $200,000 to purchase the panels, so really, it's potentially a $200,000 cost for the town.
Okay. The question, how much savings in electricity? I guess that's the benefit of having the panels. When does it -- when do we break even from National Grid?
Yeah, I would estimate 10 years. I guess we have to run the -- but I'd have to run the --
Okay, Bruce's estimate is perfectly fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Alvin Drayman, Precinct 7. I think I'm going to repeat a question because I didn't hear the answer clearly. What is the cost of replacing the panels? Did you say 200,000?
No, the cost to purchase the new panels are $200,000. The cost to remove and reset is kind of baked into the MSBA cost estimate put together. So if you're talking 200 -- about, I would say estimate from that cost estimate, $200,000 to actually remove and reset, but then it's another $200,000 for the actual purchase of the panels.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Schultz, Precinct 8. Question for the Finance Commission. Fall and spring town meeting, we saw fiscal projections going into 2030, where we were going to be going in the red. What do the proposed warrants tonight, how do they impact the projection?
Mr. Moderator, answer the previous speaker's question. One thing that's important to keep in mind that we'll be borrowing to fund the -- this project that's proposed, both the roof and the elevators that will be proposed in the next article. So although we're forecasting an operating budget deficit, we still have to pull a lot together on that, these numbers, only a portion of this cost is going to hit the operating budget each year, so according to the debt schedule. So the cost will be spread out over multiple fiscal years.
Just as part of the analysis, we knew these costs were coming. They've been --
Can you give some mic?
Certainly. As part of this analysis, we knew these costs would be coming. There was a study already voted on in order to decide whether or not we could go forward and what the project would be for the roof, the roof would have to be done. Similarly, the work for the elevators was known. We knew that was coming. There was a firm hired to look at the design of that as well. So part of that cost has been forecast in the future forecast for the future expenses.
And just one final note, town meeting approved the feasibility study for this project last fall, and we deliberately level-funded the debt capital budget this year, recognizing we'd be coming back for this project. Otherwise, you would, because of inflationary costs, we would have increased the amount of our capital budget. So again, we feel we can absorb this. But you're right, the challenges are going to be there with or without this project. Unfortunately, if we don't do this project, we're going to have other challenges dealing with the leaky roof.
I know.
But no, but I want people to ensure that this is part of our capital planning process that went back again as far as back as last fall.
Yeah, I mean, just from what some of the previous comments have said, we're going to be running in the red soon, and we keep getting these must-do projects. At some point, it's going to be about trade-offs. Thank you, you know, for the feedback, but, you know, we need to start thinking about making hard decisions too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Liz Reinowich, Precinct 11. I have a question. You were saying you wanted a 30-year warranty on the roof, and I thought I heard the panels only are good for 20 years. Is, if so, removal of those panels, will that invalidate your 30-year warranty?
So the existing solar panels are estimated to have a useful life of 20 years, not necessarily warranty, but useful life of 20 years. The new panels, I guess we still are designing the new panel system, so the roof will have a 30-year warranty. The new solar panels, I guess we desire 30-year life expectancy, but the technology, so that's something still be verified. As far as it will not void, it will, if, let's say we have to replace the roof, those next solar panels in 20 years, we just have to go through appropriate, hire the appropriate people to work on the roof. There's certain roof warranty requirements so that you notify people that you're working on the roof. So I don't see it avoiding the roof warranty. No.
Okay, so one's 20 years, one's 30, but you don't see a problem?
Well, I guess the 20 is not a guarantee, it's just a useful life. And I guess the new technology could potent -- so I guess we're still looking into this new, the new solar panels. I don't know if they come with 30 years, that's something for us to, not 30-year warranty, 30-year estimated life. I guess that's something to potentially look into, to see if we could match the estimated useful life of the estimated useful life of the roof.
Yeah, well, even if they're different, we just want to make sure that the one that comes off first doesn't wreck the one that's --
Correct.
You know, they're longer. Thank you.
Paul Regazio, Precinct 2. Just have a couple of questions. Have the specifications been specific as to what this is going to be?
Specific -- the specifications have not been developed to this level. It's only at 30% schematic, so we still have to go through the design development phase and the development of the construction documents.
So again, this has, I assume this has not been put out to bid yet?
No, that will happen this fall.
So again, the specifications still have to be determined?
Well, the schematic design does outline the requirements, and so the recommendation is PVC membrane roofing material with the 500 solar panels. But as far as the details specifically, like the construction documents, that's to be finished this summer.
I mean, what continuities do we have? Because I see the word estimate.
So we have a 15 -- MSBA allows us to carry a 5% owner's contingency.
Okay.
And yeah, and we've done 11 test cuts to verify the existing conditions, so we've done, we've done pretty significant F-level of effort as part of the schematic design.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else getting up, so why don't we vote on Article One, which would be to appropriate $4,527,956 for partial roof replacement at the South Row Elementary School. All in favor will vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. If you're uncertain, you can abstain. Is our -- is our counter working? We're going to need, we're going to need to see the count on Article One. John, do we have the, do we have the screen with the vote?
Redoing it.
Oh, it's redoing it?
Yeah.
By the way, you know this is a special town meeting because I'm not the only one here with a podium. All of you have a podium. I don't want you to go crazy about it, but we have that. Yes. Okay. Please, if you remember how you voted the last time, do the same this time. Okay. This does not appear to be working. Why don't we have, I think all of you have the little cards to vote. All in favor, raise your card. Okay, all in post? Oh, okay, nobody was. So we're all set. Unanimous vote. Thank you. Let's go to Article Two.
So Article Two is a request for additional funding for the school elevator replacement project we currently have going on. It is the high school elevator, also for the Westlands Community Education Center elevator. Those were originally voted at the spring 2023 in town meeting for FY24 capital, and also the McCarthy Middle School elevator replacement. That was voted for the FY21, FY25 capital funding in April of 2024. So just kind of going back to the beginning of this project, I mean, we annually do update when we prepare a capital plan. We evaluate all of our infrastructure to see what is nearing for replacement needs. So in 2000, and we had an update performed in 2002 in all of our school buildings for elevators. And at that time, we recommended replacement of the elevators for the community ed building for FY24 in the amount of $325,000, and then for the CHS elevator in the amount of $480,000. Those were based off of some assessments in 2022. And then also in FY25 from that same assessment, or estimated replacement for the McCarthy elevator in the amount of $325,000. Those three projects were funded, you know, relatively close together. We, with all of our projects going on, we decided to put all those projects together into one project, knowing that they're all be completed likely in the summer, being a school. And so those three projects were combined this past fall and in the amount estimated, the funded amount of $1.13 million. And the reason why we're here tonight is just because of the, how critical this is. Elevators are very critical for accessibility in the schools. There's no redundancy in the elevators, and so we do want to replace the elevators next, next summer. With construction lead times, we're looking at that we probably would have to put this out to bid this summer, which is why we're before you tonight and not in the fall. So with the, to a little more detail of the 2022 assessment, so the high school elevator is 50 years old. is 50 years old, accessing three floors, it has a buried hydraulic cylinder, and that was, this is all in the 2022 assessment, recommended for replacement. And also was noted that all of the major components are beyond their useful life. The McCarthy and Community Education elevators were essentially installed around the same time, same, really type of elevators. Those are 35 years old, two floors. There's one additional stop mid-floor at the community ed building. And what the recommendation in that report was overall in good or fair condition with dated components. And buried hydraulic cylinder that should be considered for replacement. And it also noted considered replacement of cart and hall buttons and controller components because those parts are out, are no longer made. So moving forward to, once we secured all the FY24 and FY25 funding, we combined as one various school elevator project, we went out for a design, RFP services, and we hired BLW engineers to, to do this design. They came on board in the fall, they completed, they began their initial assessment in this past winter, with schematic design being presented this, this spring to us. And they really did a detailed assessment above and beyond the 2022 report, looking at, you know, doing another evaluation of all the elevators, and also making sure that we meet stretch code requirements and they knew, or any code requirements. So their recommendations for the three, three elevators, extensive replacements recommended at each location, essentially relocating all control, mechanical, electrical, and cab components. Additional electrical infrastructure upgrades are required to make these upgrades at locations. Also, there was code requirements that were not spelled out before in the 2022 assessment. The, the code requires that the mechanical room be both heated and cooled, and that is recommended through, through a split duct system. So that, that is, was an add. And so, and then with, and I'll get into the overall cost estimate, with these additional costs, it brings the project to over $1.5 million. Per state requirements, if you have a project over $1.5 million, you're required to hire known as project manager. We don't currently have that person on board because we were estimating below that value originally, but we're probably putting, we would be putting out a proposal in the next few weeks, and bringing that, that owner's project manager on board this summer. Also, just some of the other, I think, differences between when we were here two years ago and today is, I think there also was some escalation related to just some construction components. So with the current 2025 estimate from BLW, this is the breakdown that they show. So the Chelmsford High School elevator is estimated at 565, Community Education elevator 570, the McCarthy Middle School elevator 545, so all around the same price. That subtotal is $1.68 million. We add in an estimate of $75,000 for the owner's project manager, add in owner's contingency of $75,000. So that brings the revised construction total to $1.83 million. The original funded, refunded amount from FY24 and FY25 was $1.13 million, so that is a shortfall of $700,000, and that is the, the request tonight. Oops, apologize. Also, just to break it down a little further, is I wanted to show the, how did we arrive at the 565, the 570, the 545? So what BLW had done was a very detailed assessment of the different elevator component systems. So that, for the Chelmsford High School, the elevator conveying system 345, the general construction condition $70,000. The mechanical upgrades, that primarily is the, the heating and cooling required in the mechanic, in the mechanical rooms, $50,000. The electrical system requirements required at each of the locations, $60,000 for the high school. And then this design, which I guess we've already funded, but the design is $40,000. And comparing that to the 2022 assessment, we had from the original 2022 report, was $120,000 recommended for replacement repairs, and we had budgeted for 480. The community ed was $117,000, was recommended repairs, we had budgeted for 325. And then the, and when I say the 117, that was elevator, elevator-related repair replacements, and then we had added another design contingency to get to the 480, the 325, and the 325. I guess the three elevators here, it says 565, I could also, I don't, without getting into the, what's on the slide, the breakdown for each of the buildings is very similar, as you can see, all ranging between 545 and 565. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 2.
Does Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 2.
School Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, when the School Committee convened, they unanimously, unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you. Questions or debate?
Hi, Liz Reinowich, Precinct 11. I actually attended the Finance Meeting on 529 and heard that the McCarthy School elevator was 35 years old. It was good, in good condition, but dated. My question is, do you have any details on failure rates of the McCarthy elevator? Could we?
Sure, so, so in all the recommendations, both for the 2022 and the 2025, it was all rated, both recognized that it was in fair condition, and we don't have really failure rates in the schools, but we want to make sure that we replace them before they fail. We, it has been noted, particularly in the 2025 report, that the parts are no longer, many of the parts are no longer made. So should we have a failure, that elevator could be down for a significant amount of time, or, and so I guess us, we want to be proactive about the replacement, and that is both recommended, and I guess it's, there's more detail shown in the 2025 estimate that highlights that they really essentially replace all the, almost all the components because of the age. Even though they're in fair condition, you want to replace it before, we don't want to ever get to a point where we have a failing elevator in the schools.
Right, so it sounds like it hasn't failed?
No, there hasn't been failures, but they're dated, and so we're just, if there is a failure, it's, there's not an easy repair.
Okay, because I had heard it was in good, good working condition at the 529 meeting.
So good working condition, but dated parts.
Okay, and now you're saying you cannot get these parts?
So many of these parts are no longer made.
Okay, is there regular maintenance on these elevators?
So we do do regular maintenance and inspections, but again, there's certain components that are very, you'd almost have to custom fabricate parts, they're, they're not made, they're not shelf-ready.
Could you, are, are those elevators the same at the McCarthy and the high school?
The elevators in the community at McCarthy are the same, they're different in the high school.
But different what?
The, the high school elevator is different.
Okay, so if you don't replace the McCarthy, can you get some of those parts from the one that's equivalent to it and keep them as a backup?
The recommendation from our, from BLW is to replace the elevator given the age. It's 35 years old, so I guess you, I don't know if we want to take 35-year-old parts and put them on another, on another elevator.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, like, we know we're getting very close to critical red on the budget, or it seems to be.
Are, are you arguing now, or are you asking?
No, that was a kind of a statement, not arguing.
Well, I'm, it's discussion.
Well, I mean, I just
I just want to know whether the timer should run.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Well, you do understand how that makes my job a little bit more difficult.
No, no, all right, I'll leave it at that. I, I will vote against this because I don't, I don't know if that's illegal either, but...
Thank you.
Paul Regazio, Precinct 2. I see that on this article, we had estimated these projects to cost $1.1 million. I see they're now at $1.8 million. How set are you with those? And that was, and with my previous question on the previous article, I asked how good was the $4 million estimate? I'm concerned whether these, how, whether we run into the same problem with the roof, you know, being, coming in a hell of a lot higher.
Sure, so I would say with, we're fairly confident, because this is, we did a very detailed assessment, and they went through all code requirements, went through every component of, not just the elevator, but the infrastructure that connects to the elevator. So this is, this is a much more detailed assessment, essentially a schematic design. So when we get to schematic design, that cost should really, should really stand for the estimated construction cost. I think going back to 2024, we had a very, very high-level study that estimated, and it maybe didn't capture everything. And I guess to, it has been brought up, I think, at the Finance Committee, is how do we prevent this? And so one thing we are doing, we have these very large projects, we're trying to advance it in a stage or into an assessment. So an example, and it was at the library, we were looking upon HVAC replacement. I don't know what that overall cost is, we're finishing the assessment right now, and we'll, we've already asked for some initial funding, but we'll ask for additional funding to, to capture the entire cost. So I think it's important that we try to advance as close to as possible schematic designs before we ask for all the funding. And that's how we've, I guess, shifted in the past year or two. You always have cost estimates, can also, construction is still, like, we get, we get variable cost estimates, still pretty significant, but this cost estimate is, is pretty, should be firm with what we hopefully see the prices come in as.
Thank you. The other question I have is, since the previous article, we approved $4 million for a new roof, and now we're going $2 million on these elevators, are we certain that we're going to be using these schools in the future? I would like the Superintendent to talk about, simply about the Parker School system, what is going to happen to, to these three schools? Are they going to be continuing?
So I mean, I can answer that they will be continuing, but also Superintendent Lane can add to it if he wants to.
Hi, good evening. Yes, these schools before you this evening are going to remain active school sites under any of our plans going forward in the future. So the Parker Middle School project, which is under consideration for a potential addition, renovation, new school option, Parker very well may come offline. But if you note, over the last two years, when we knew that project was advancing, we basically have been maintaining the property, but we haven't been making significant capital investments in the school. So again, Parker is just going to be maintained at this point until we know a longer-term plan for the school, but in any of our scenarios, the current high school, McCarthy, and the Community Education Building aren't going anywhere. They're going to be used for quite some time to come.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Ginger School, Precinct 5. Through you to the previous, or to the presenter. For the McCarthy Middle School elevator, you said it's 35 years old. It, did I read correctly in the notes that it is an estimated life of 40 years to 50 years useful?
No, no, I think, so when we designed, we designed 30 to 50 years.
Okay.
So we designed 30, but we start to look at replacements for elevators, or for, I, it depends on, I guess, some infrastructure is 20 years, but we tend to look for elevators 30 to 50 years.
Okay, and so we're basically within the, we're within the timeframe where elevators do fail?
Yes, that is accurate.
I just wanted to make sure that I had read that properly. And then you, I think you answered before, but I would just want to make sure I heard it properly. The parts that will be coming out of Community Ed and McCarthy are not really of the type that could be used, let's say, do one and then use the other for, you know, have us a parts available rather than having to track them down someplace. They're of an age where you, they aren't recommended for reuse?
So the Community Education and McCarthy elevators are essentially the same elevator, so theoretically you could potentially use parts interchangeably, but them being 35 years old, I just wouldn't recommend it.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. This is Lauren Roberts from Precinct 8. Question through you to the speaker, or to the presenter. Who did the initial assessment? It looks like it was the same person that was awarded the contract.
No, the initial assessment in 2022 was associated elevate, sorry, elevator engineering.
Okay, which is different than?
Different.
Okay, got it. You mentioned custom fabrication being an option for the parts that are no longer made. How long would that take? Is that a true option?
I, I don't know how true it is with each part, there's so many components on the elevator. It's just, in the, in this, particularly this recent report, it just says that the parts are no longer made, and so that is, you know, with it being critical infrastructure concern, I imagine that you could, I mean, you could custom fabricate parts, I just, so, but anything custom has a cost to it and the lead time.
So I'll just kind of put my opinion out there regarding that option, that it seems like it's a much less costly option than $500,000 for a full replacement of an elevator. If we were to get custom fabricated parts, that might have a little bit of a lead time. We still would have one elevator in use?
No, that's the thing, is these buildings do not have another elevator. So the thing is, is if elevator failure, you potentially shut down classroom space, and that is, is a critical infrastructure. So we, I guess we want to avoid that at all costs.
Okay, so all three schools have just a single elevator?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
There's no redundancy.
And the, the first elevator mentioned was a 50-year, and the other two are 35 years old. Could they potentially last up to 50 years?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the thing, is this like, you don't, I just, we, I would never want to say, I, I mean, maybe, but we don't, they could fail tomorrow, I mean, we, who knows? And so the recommendation from the reports we have is to replace them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we will vote on Article 2 to appropriate $700,000 for the elevator replacements for the high school, the Westlands Community Education Center, and the McCarthy Middle School. Again, this requires two-thirds vote. The article passes 103 in favor, two opposed, no abstentions. Article 3?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 3 is a request for funding from the Community Preservation Fund to do a perimeter survey at the Coolest Farm 4 parcels. This is a required action in order to put a restriction on the property. We have to go out and do a perimeter survey on the parcels of, of the site. This article has nothing to do with how the site is going to be used. We are required, since we use state funding through the Community Preservation Act, in order to purchase these properties, we have to put a restriction that needs state approval, and in order to submit that restriction, we need to do a perimeter survey. So with that as intro, I'm going to turn the podium over to Carl Bischoff, who's a member of the Community Preservation Committee and of the Conservation Commission, to describe the request under this article.
Good evening. Carl Bischoff, Chairman of the Conservation Commission and a member of the Community Preservation Commission, Committee. As you know, the Coolest property was purchased for approximately $4 million in 2023 using Community Preservation Act funds. This is four parcels totaling 42 acres, approximately 42 acres on Pine Hill Road and on Hunt Road across, both across Route 495. There's two parcels north of 495 and two parcels south of 495. When Community Preservation Act CPA funds are used for acquiring open space property, Section 12A of the Act requires a permanent restriction be placed on the property to ensure that the property continues to be used for the applicable Community Preservation Act purpose. Last year, the town manager and the Select Board asked the Conservation Commission to take responsibility for this process, for this property, including developing the community, the conservation restriction. The restriction is a specific form of deed restriction, a legal requirement, a legal agreement recorded with the Registry of Deeds. It will protect the land in perpetuity. An independent party is engaged by the town to hold the restriction, and they are obligated to ensure that we, the town, continue to meet the requirements of the document of the conservation restriction as defined in the document, and specifically that it meets what's called the baseline document report, which is part of the process of developing the CR, the conservation restriction. So the baseline document report records the condition of the property at the time the conservation restriction is established. It serves as a benchmark for future monitoring and enforcement of the conservation restriction. A key part of this CR is a perimeter survey. So in order to have the BDR, which gives you So, in order to have the BDR, which gives you the CR, you need to have a perimeter survey. That's what we're here for tonight. The request before you is for $33,600 for a survey that meets all of those cascading requirements. And it's for four parcels of land, and it's for $33,600.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article Three.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article Three.
Does Community Preservation have a recommendation?
Both the Conservation Commission and the Community Preservation Commission approved.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Just a quick question. Glenn Thorin, Precinct Seven. Are the parcels of land currently marked? Do they have corner markers on them?
Not that I'm aware of.
No markers on them?
It's mostly stone walls, which traditionally, stone walls are boundaries, but they're not marked.
So, we're looking at all-time deed description. So, now, you're going to rewrite the deeds for these particular properties with the corner markers? And any markers in line between the corners of the property?
There will be staking done as part of this.
And by staking, I assume you mean like metal pins and so? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There being none, we will vote on Article Three. Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't understand. Did you say that we already own this land, right?
Oh, yeah. Yes, it was purchased in 2023.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's try again. We'll vote on Article Three to appropriate $33,600 from Community Preservation Fund General Reserve for the perimeter survey of the four parcels of land at Coolest Farms. Okay, we apparently are going backwards in time. But according to the vote, it's 103 in favor, one opposed, no abstentions. So, the article passes. We will go on to Article Four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Four is funding for a collective bargaining agreement with our library employees' union. You may recall, at the time of the spring annual town meeting, just almost two months ago, we appropriated funds to settle three collective bargaining agreements with the three police unions. The library will be the fourth. We have two remaining. That would be the Public Safety Dispatchers and the Firefighters Union. We're actively engaged with them. We hope to be back with them, hopefully, at fall town meeting. This agreement for you, the appropriation, is calculated by our town accountant and library director, is in the amount of $55,388. It's a three-year collective bargaining agreement. The wage increases, you can see, are 3%, 3 and 1/4, 3 and 1/4. We also had a slight increase in the longevity schedule by $250. And then, we modified the vacation leave by one year. And basically, what had happened there was, when an employee hit their fifth, and 10th, and 20th anniversary, they would get an extra week of vacation. So, what we did is, we pushed it up a year, saying, instead of getting that extra week at the end of your fifth year, we'll give it to you at the end of your fourth year, and so forth. And then, finally, we allowed a carryover of unused vacation from five to 10 days per year, and then some miscellaneous language changes in the agreement. And the agreement has been ratified by the Library Employees Union. And the last step is this evening, the Select Board have approved the agreement. And the last step this evening is for town meeting ratification of the funding for the first year, and then it will be set for the upcoming three fiscal years. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article Four.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article Four.
Anyone have any questions? There being none, we will vote on Article Four pursuant to Chapter 154, Section 154-7, Parents C, parentheses. This does require a two-thirds vote because this is on a special town meeting.
This is Article Four.
This is Article Four. Okay, we're all set. Or we're not. Is there an expectation that this will actually work? What? Okay, let's, you know, we don't want to be here all night. All in favor of passing Article Four? All opposed? One? Two? So, it passes the two-thirds. And we go to the final article of the evening, Article Five.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Five is the final article this evening. This is an article to adopt regulations established by the Cemetery Commissioners for private family mausoleums at the town cemeteries. Under the provisions of state law, the town meeting has to approve these regulations. I'm going to turn the podium over to our Finance Director, John Souza, who has a background in cemetery superintendency to present in this article. We also have our current superintendent, David Boyle, with us this evening, as well as the cemetery commissioners in attendance this evening.
Thank you, Town Manager Cohen. Good evening, everyone. Under this article, the Cemetery Commission is proposing to add a new section of rules and regulations for the town's public cemeteries. This new section includes regulations for private family mausoleums. And the regulations are available with the handout materials for tonight's meeting at the handout table. Some of you may be unfamiliar with mausoleums. This slide shows a typical mausoleum that would be permitted under the regulations. Basically, it's an alternative to ground burial. This next slide highlights many of the key points in the regulations. The regulations call for a lot size with a minimum area of 400 square feet with a three-foot setback on all sides. The design of the mausoleum must be approved by the Superintendent of Cemeteries. Landscaping must be, the grounds must be returned to the original condition by the contractor following the construction of the mausoleum. And then perpetual care, prior to construction, the lot owner must pay an amount to the cemetery department that equals 10% of the mausoleum construction cost. And these funds will be held in perpetuity by the cemetery for any future maintenance, just like they do with other perpetual care funds that are collected today. And those are under the, held under the custody of the town treasurer for the cemetery. There are limitations on the number of entomements within the mausoleum and the number of cremated remains that can be interred within the lot area. This next slide shows a portion of Section O at Pine Ridge Cemetery, where the mausoleum area will be located. This area was designed by a cemetery planning and civil engineering firm. And you can see, looking at the numbering, that it will contain 14 lots. Finally, the last slide highlights the specifications and size limitations for the mausoleum section. Lots one through seven will allow a mausoleum that is eight foot wide by 10 feet long. Lots eight through 14 will allow a mausoleum that is seven feet wide by 10 feet long. The maximum height for all of the mausoleums would be three feet, six inches, plus or minus six inches. And the reason it's expressed that way is that's how all of the, in the granite business for monuments, and in the cemetery regulations, it's customary to express them as the number of whole feet followed by the number of inches. So, basically, you're talking a 36-inch minimum to a 48-inch maximum. And so, that concludes the presentation. If there are any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
A majority of the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five with a vote of three in favor, one against, one abstention, and two absent.
Select Board?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article Five.
Scott Davidson, Precinct Three. Have there been any other mockups for any of the other cemeteries in town?
At this time, the Cemetery Commission planned this section for Pine Ridge because it's one of the largest and most active cemeteries in town. If, depending on the number of, depending on the number of sales, the next place the Cemetery Commission would consider a location would be Fairview Cemetery, because Pine Ridge and Fairview have the most land area available. The other four cemeteries would not be suitable for mausoleums.
Thank you.
Tom Amiro, Precinct Five. Wouldn't this reduce the number of plots? Because these are bigger than, you know, regular plots.
Basically, there are, it depends on the size of the lot area, but the cemetery would be gaining more revenue by allowing mausoleums in a limited area. So, you know, and also, this area that it's proposed for is sort of, if you look at it, it's a sort of a narrow section. And so, you could really only do so much. You see up, you see up here, the dotted line, there's a chain-linked fence or a fence that, around the perimeter of the cemetery. So, sometimes it's more difficult to sell lots that are right next to, you know, fence and that, so.
Has there been any thought given to planning for plots for green burials?
I'm going to ask our cemetery superintendent to answer that question. It was on green, as to any thought for green burials. At this time, there, I don't have any plans, but it is in our future, but not right, not at this current time. I don't have anything set in stone.
So, where did the impetus come from?
I've had numerous requests for this. For this here? I've had numerous requests for mausoleum space.
Okay. So, if a lot of us started to make requests for green burials, then something like this might come up in the future?
Yeah, absolutely. I need to find the right spot.
Okay. Highly recommended. It'd save you a lot of money, people.
Thank you.
Good evening. Doug Bruce, Precinct Eleven. A question, I was reading through the rules and regulations, and it mentions what happens with the interred if there is damage to the mausoleum itself. Who's responsible for the repairs should damage happen to these mausoleums?
So, what happens is, there's a perpetual care fund set up, and that money is to be held in perpetuity, as the name implies. And then, the interest earned over time accumulates and will be used for the repair, any repairs that are necessary.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Wong, Precinct Eleven. I would like to speak against this motion. It's a maintenance nightmare. I know we have impertuity care. Something gets damaged, or the very rare occasion, but you do read it every year about vandalism of some sort. It's going to be another repair job for the cemetery department. I mean, the drawings look great. They're very nice. But again, the design must be approved by the cemetery superintendent. Well, this superintendent, what in 10 years? There's another superintendent. I read the Lawyer Full Employment Act for, must be approved by the cemetery superintendent. Our cemeteries are pretty well-designed for very low maintenance. Headstones of most all places, the headstones are flat, can be easily cut. All these things have to be trimmed around now. It's hundreds of yards of weed trimmer and extra lay, but to cut around the whole thing. And last town meeting, the Pet Cemetery raised its head. We're going to have a commission or a committee to the study, a pet cemetery connected to one of our cemeteries. Now, knowing the people that talked about a pet cemetery, it will be long be there.
Sir, you're really going off. There's nothing to indicate that a pet cemetery would be connected to a human cemetery.
I apologize. I'm voting against it only because I see just a maintenance nightmare. The impertuity care just doesn't fit with me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chris Bowman, Precinct Ten. The image here shows that there's two crypts per mausoleum, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a height restriction for the mausoleums?
There is right there. It's three foot six, plus or minus. It's three foot six, plus or minus six inches. So, it can go from three foot high up to four foot high.
Okay. Could you say that just a little bit louder, please?
So, the medium would be three foot six, plus or minus six inches.
Okay. So, two is the maximum? And is there a possibility of just having one crypt per mausoleum?
You could if you wanted to purchase the lot.
Okay. But no more than two?
No more than two.
Thank you very much.
No more than that height.
Thank you.
And to answer the last gentleman's question, once I leave, those rules and regulations are in place. The next person would have to come before town meeting and change those rules and regs later.
Deirdre Conley, Precinct Nine. Just a quick question. I had a family member be recently buried, and we were able to use the land alongside the mausoleum at our family mausoleum. I was just wondering, is that something that would be able to utilize here?
So, what you'll be able to do with the map that we had up, you'll be able to do where you see the mausoleum sitting there. So, that'll hold two casket interments there. What we'll also allow is a certain number of cremation interments in ground with the ability to put a two-by-one marker there also.
But not caskets?
No caskets, no. There'll be no other, there's no room. There'll be no room within those lots to put any more caskets. It'll be cremation.
Like on the left or the right?
So, there's going to be, so if you look here, there'll be two caskets, and around the mausoleum, you'll be able to do cremation.
Okay.
Glenn Thorin, Precinct Seven. You almost answered all of my questions. If you have room for two caskets, is one of those areas suitable if you want to put cremation urns in one side? Could you do that?
You can, but maximum of two. It'll be just like what we have now. A traditional two-grave lot, you're allowed either a casket and a cremation or two cremations, and that goes back to memorialization.
Okay, so you said this is a family mausoleum?
It is.
So, how many family members? I assume two with the caskets. But is there a number of cremation urns that could surround it?
Again, depending on the lot, you could do some cremation interments.
Three, four, five?
Possibly three or four.
Okay, last question. Normally, a grave spot has a marker that says who's there.
Yes.
Where are the markers on the mausoleum? And if you were to have cremation urns, where would they be?
So, the mark, so with the interments? So the mark -- so with the interments in the mausoleum, they'll be on the block doors there for each -- for each person. As you see here, with the grass around, you'll have -- we could do some cremation burials, and there'll be flush marker, two flush two-by-one markers to note exactly where they are.
What are the doors made out of?
Granite.
Granite. And what is the cost of one of these mausoleums?
The cost can be anywhere from $75,000 and up.
How up?
Hmm?
$10,000, $20,000?
Well, you know, I mean, it can go into the -- it can go over $100,000 easy. It just depends.
Thank you.
Dave Hadley, Precinct 1. I just had a question as far as how much space these actually take up as opposed to a regular four, you know, four -- four-space lot that you would get. Does this take up a lot more space than a standard four-position lot, or?
So basically, the way we're going to price these mausoleum lots, it makes up for what we're losing. Okay, so we look at it, we go, okay, this -- I could have got four, eight, two-grave lots out of that particular area.
Right.
So I take that, I take the interments that we would have gotten out of that. That's going to be the cost of the -- cost of the mausoleum lot. We're only selling the lot. We're not getting involved with selling mausoleums or anything like that. So I'm -- I'm, you know, I'm looking at that, saying, okay, well, this is my cost. This is what I'm losing. Just for example, there's one of the lots there, 27, 20 by 20. It's about -- so it's 400 square feet. That's going to cost in the vicinity of $27,000, $28,000, and that's going to cover all that cost that I lost. So But I'm also getting possibly four, five, six cremation interments also in that area.
So if you would take a certain area of land for the mausoleums as opposed to a four-grave lot, this is going to -- it's going to be more cost-effective for the Cemetery Department to have these.
Absolutely.
But it's going to take a lot more space for just two graves.
So if you think of a four-grave lot, a four-grave lot is 14 by 11.
Right.
So it's about 140, 144, 141 square feet. So every four-grave lot is that. An eight-grave lot would be double that. So you're getting about 300 at that point.
So just for example, if you were going to -- if 100 people were going to go into a space, you would need a lot more space for 100 people to have mausoleums, if you will.
Exactly, yeah.
Then.
And again, you know what? I've had probably a half dozen requests. I have two people that are ready to -- are waiting for this to happen, that are ready to -- they're waiting to give me the word, you know, give them the word to go, that it's a go. I might not sell another one.
The only reason I bring this up is because it does seem like we're getting crunched for space, and
Well
If you've driven through any of the cemeteries, you see that they're getting very full.
So honestly, at Pine Ridge, I just got done developing just under eight acres. And with the cremation rate, the way it's going, cremation is honestly is the direction we're going in.
The cremation's going to offset the mausoleum, I assume.
Oh, well, it already has.
Right.
I mean, I have four walls at Pine Ridge that are 80% full. You know, I just have to keep building them out.
One more question. So if you had a four-grave site, or an eight-grave site or whatever, and people have been cremated, could you put more than -- more than that many in that space?
So four-grave, a four-grave lot
Say a four-grave lot.
It's going to hold eight cremation burials.
Okay.
Maximum.
But you're saying a mausoleum could only hold two caskets, if you will, and then maybe some more cremation urns?
Yeah, but if you -- if you look at the -- if you look at the measurements of that mausoleum, it's only seven by nine.
Okay.
A traditional two-grave lot, seven by 10.
Okay.
So it is actually that the -- the
Okay.
The base of it is only going to be seven by nine. So you're going to still have that other area to sell.
I'm just concerned about the
I mean, I'm trying to maximize every drop of grass I have.
Yeah, I'm just -- I'm just -- I'm concerned about the amount of space that we're using because it -- these things are filling up really fast.
Well
And hopefully this doesn't make the problem worse.
Over here at Fairview, I still have 10 acres of land to develop.
Right.
That, you know, that Fairview isn't even half developed.
Right. Okay.
At this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Ginger Scoog, Precinct 5. Question for the speaker. The -- I know we're talking about these in new developed areas. Is there any chance or planning for something like this to go in an area -- almost, I don't know if there's a term for renovating the cemetery areas. If families wanted to, for instance, add one of these where they've already made some -- yeah, already the accommodation, is there any provision or planning for transitioning to one of these in one of the general areas of cemeteries?
No, this is --
Okay.
This is a specific spot.
Okay. So these would not just be able to be popped in?
No, they're not going to just be popped in.
Sorry.
You know, wherever. No, I understand the question. No, they're not just going to pop up.
Okay.
This is a specific area that was designed.
Great. And then so there's -- and they are also not, sorry, don't want to be grim, but not a layering kind of structure where they could be put over top of an area where it -- a grave has already been put there?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, great. Just making sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other cheerful questions? Okay, then let's vote on this, Article V. in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll see you all in October, hopefully.